All the persons are present with the exception of Rayom and Katna, who indicated today that they wouldn't be joining us this evening due to illness. Item number two on our agenda this evening, following roll call, is our item three is a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent prayer and lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance?
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come in. Item four on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so only on agenda items appearing before us this evening, which you will be recognized by a council member and invited to the podium. We will remind you to introduce yourself for the record by stating your name as well as your address, and then you'll be allowed to speak on an item no longer than five minutes. There is a microphone at the podium that has a button underneath the word "push" and will light up green when the microphone is on. Item number five is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Attachment number one in your packets. All the persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to accept the previous minutes.
We have a motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item six on our agenda this evening is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council continues their year focusing on aspects with the Aquatic Center development. The group continues to plan awareness and outreach and fundraising events. The first is kicking off here with Giving Tuesday, which takes place on December 3rd with an online campaign to raise awareness as well as generate donation or donor activity. So watch for videos and posts on the city's social media outlets on December 3rd for ways to donate and assist the Mayor's Youth Council in their outreach and fundraising. Beautification Council is working on their holiday projects. The annual Christmas Tree Walk takes place the first two weekends of December at the Historical Museum, and the council is partaking in this with a tree as they've done in previous years. You won't want to miss this event and other trees on display decorated by community members. For the last number of years, the group has also fundraised for the Holiday Evergreen Balls for their light poles downtown, which have just been hung late last week. The Winter Recreational Guide by the Parks and Recreation Department has been published. Encourage folks to check that out for winter activities. The airport held the annual Operations and Land Use Seminar here at the Hotel Mead, which is the state conference for municipal, or sorry, general aviation airports. Important to note, we've also secured the summit for 2020, so thanks to the Convention Visitors Bureau as well as everyone that made a pitch for Wisconsin Rapids to be the host city for that conference. It was a great opportunity to showcase all the improvements at Alexander Field in supporting a growing economy in our area. Fuel sales, landing fees, and other services were up over last year, generating over $165,000 of new profits that stay with the Airport Commission to support operations and offset cost increases to the owner municipalities. Over 700 aviation or aircraft operations occurred between May and October, which was another record year out at the airport. The early onset of winter has impacted our public construction projects. The Chase Street reconstruction between 17th and 21st Avenue has reached a point where the construction activities must be paused and will resume in the spring. We thank residents for their patience during that and that unanticipated issue with that project. City crews are also transitioning to their winter road maintenance, so be on the lookout for crews that are doing pothole patching and road repair maintenance throughout the city and are also already dealing with winter snow events. The aquatics and riverbank projects have also been impacted with discussions forthcoming on the impacts, if any, to their expected completion deadlines. The 2020 budget is before you tonight for your approval. I appreciate the time our city staff, our finance director, and all the persons have invested in reviewing and discussing it. I'm proud that we've been able to continue funding levels for the many services that we are proud to provide the public with a few enhancements, most notably to street maintenance and reinvestment, recreational offerings to name a few, and all told, in the proposed budget, around a $33 increase to a $100,000 home. The Rapids Rediscovered Housing Program continues to have activity as we make contact with potential owners of property, or owners of vacant property and realtors. I've also fielded discussion with builders and contractors as they plan their work in 2020 on a few of the city-owned properties that we've got actively marketed to them. In the category of attended, hosted, and participated, participated in a panel with the UWSP Center for the Small City alongside other central Wisconsin-area mayors about the challenges and opportunities in our cities. Participated in the Lincoln High School Career Day along with many city staff, highlighting the various careers and job opportunities in local government. Gave a presentation to the Annual League Conference about the recreational investments that our city has undertaken in recent years. Hosted Washington School second graders here in the council chambers, as well as the Police Department, for a tour at City Hall, where the clerk and I were proud to host them and partake in that visit. Also gave, participated in a tour of the Southwood County Food Pantry located over off of Chase Street. Also, River Cities Clubhouse celebrated their sixth-year anniversary here in the city, which provides engagement opportunities for individuals in our community. Also hosted an Economic Development Roundtable for the county here in Rapids two Fridays ago. Spoke to a couple of Boy Scout troops about the various aspects with local government. The Tao family New Year celebrated their clan New Year, which invited a lot of community members to participate, as well as acknowledge our veterans who, on November 11th, had a great recognition and celebration and honor of their service in our community. And finally, participated in a roundtable on housing affordability at the invitation of the White House Housing and Urban Development to discuss the barriers to introducing new and rehabilitated housing units in our city last Wednesday. There are a number of programs that our city could benefit from our, from and our housing authority, local developers and landlords. Now, we'll be receiving more information about these initiatives from me in the near future. Held two coffee with the mayor sessions on November 7th and November 19th, and on the horizon coming up, December 12th and December 14th. In the area of ribbon cuttings, the community celebrated the opening of Short and Sweet Cakery, just located across the river downtown, near Woodtrust Bank. And finally, acknowledgement to a 10-year anniversary on November 10th. Detective David Bailey and our police department recognize him for his years of service. And finally, tune into my radio show tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. on WFHR or stream live via their website. And that concludes my report. Item seven on our agenda this evening is a presentation of plaques by Police Chief Blevins for major donations, donors, sorry, to the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department K-9 Initiative. Chief, you want to come forward? And we've got a couple of folks we want to recognize that I believe are here in attendance this evening, that the chief would like to recognize for contributions of $1,000 or more to the effort to add a second K-9 to our police department. The first I'd like to invite up is Stephanie Kraus. If Stephanie's in the audience, if you could come forward, please. Nope, there you go. And Lee Chipman from Venus, Brandon and Cory Abbott from Bee's Tap House, I don't know if I see Cory here, and Alicia Golden from Door 212. If you could come forward. I understand the chief wants to present a plaque and grab a photo with all of you for... Oh.
Stephanie, she put together a quarter of us, correct? For the department, and she raised a substantial amount of money for us, and she also arranged for the Wisconsin Vested Dog Foundation to donate body armor and some actually fairly expensive equipment for the police team. So an appreciation for that, and appreciation for your support you provided, you have provided to the WRPD K-9. This is for you. Lee, this one's for you. Lee, he donated over $1,000 to the police department, K-9 Fund. Cory, there you go. Bee's Tap House, they donated over $1,000 as well to the police department, and then to Alicia from Door 212, who put on a very nice event for the police department that we appreciated very much.
Thank you for the support of the initiative, as well as the ongoing support of public safety in our community. Appreciate that very much. Number eight on our agenda this evening is my appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, attachment number two in your packets, which reads, I believe, just a single appointment. Carolyn Martin from 150, 20th Avenue South, appointed as a regular member to fill a vacant term expiring May 1st, 2022. I don't believe Carolyn's here tonight. I can't see. So anyway, submit that appointment for your consideration. Alderperson Blazer?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Coth. Any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item number nine is council appointment of ethics committee member, attachment number three in your packets. And it looks like the individual's name is Robert Teaslink. It looks, it's a reappointment to the citizen member to the city's Ethics Board. Alderperson Blazer?
I'll make a motion to approve, Robert.
We have a motion to approve by Blazer. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 10 is second reading of an ordinance deleting sections 22.09 parent 2 parent B of the and 23.08 parent 1 of the Municipal Code, eliminating Class A beer and Class A liquor license quota restrictions. Ordinance number 1261, attachment number four in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Any discussion? Any requests to speak? Seeing none, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 11 on our agenda this evening is consider resolution setting the equivalent unit ERU charge for the stormwater management utility. See attachment number five in your packets. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item? Alderperson Virginsky?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words about the...
Make sure your microphone is on, just so we can pick you up on the recording. Thank you. No, underneath the... There you go.
Over the last about 10 years, I've been watching what's happening on this council, and I think we keep pushing more and more cost on the property owner in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, and they're getting less and less service. I know in my particular area of the city, we have a lot of senior citizens. Some of them don't even have cars. Some of them are single people trying to stay in their own homes. They're living on Social Security, and their taxes go up. They probably get $20 to $40 a year increase or a month on their Social Security, but they pay more fees, they pay more taxes, and there's always something being added to the cost of living for them. We've got a $30 million budget here in the city now, and I feel that we can come up with $50,000 out of a $30 million budget. So we don't have to add another $2. I know it's only $2 a month, which isn't a lot, but it's just the idea that it just keeps coming back and back all the time, every year. So, well, you might say it's not going to be that bad on them. I feel that we just can't keep going this way, and so I can't support even a $2 increase at this particular point. Thank you.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
Mr. Terry, could you explain why, if you would, the stormwater cost and what it's going to do, and the reason for the increase, and what the purpose is? Kind of long-term plan.
Sure. So the stormwater utility is developed to maintain and maintain the sustainability of our storm sewer system throughout the city. So all of the manholes, catch basins, you know, the entire system, the cleaning of it, is funded through these fees to the stormwater utility. The city's required by the DNR to maintain its storm sewer system. There's stormwater discharge quality regulations that the city needs to follow, and this utility makes that requirement possible. The stormwater, I don't know what year that happened, but the stormwater fees were excluded or converted into a utility some time ago, and part of the reason for that is that the city doesn't have the capability, except for a referendum, to increase the general fund budget for these necessary maintenance activities. And so every year, these, the stormwater utility is reviewed, and the fees are reviewed, the costs to maintain the stormwater collection system is reviewed, and the fees are set It would be nice if there weren't any fees, but the fact of the matter is, is that there is a substantial cost to maintain the city's infrastructure, and a stormwater utility is the city's choice for how to finance those activities.
Otherwise, it would come out of the tax roll, correct?
Correct.
Tim, did you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. The main premise behind the $2 increase in the fee is basically, right now, our stormwater fee goes to cover the operational costs of the utility, that being street sweeping, storm sewer drain maintenance, and other type of permits, fees, and things like that that the DNR charges us, plus any consulting for modeling and making sure that we're complying with the DNR requirements. But also, the stormwater utility was set up to also cover the construction of our stormwater infrastructure, and currently, that's being funded by a combination of tax levy and long-term debt and partial from this fee. And basically, the increase, the $2 increase will generate about $50,000, and that $50,000 is directly offsetting and reducing the amount that we have to borrow for next year's Public Works Construction Fund budget. So in essence, it's, we're, the $50,000, the fee is increasing by $50,000, but then the amount we have to borrow and subsequent debt service in the future will be reduced by $50,000, plus an estimated, estimated that the interest savings on it is about $7,500, because now we don't have to borrow the additional $50,000, and that is the premise behind that increase in the $2.
Are there other requests to speak? Floor is open.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
A motion to approve by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Are there any further requests to speak, I guess, for the second time? Seeing none, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, four ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the public hearing on the 2020 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget, in which I will open the public hearing for individuals wishing to address the body on the adoption of the 2020 budget. Anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak to the body on the 2020 budget? For the third and final time, anyone wishing to step forward and speak to the body on the 2020 budget? Seeing no requests to speak, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to item number 13, which is consideration of a resolution adopting the 2020 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget, attachment number six in your packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 budget.
A motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, the motion's to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, four ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Item number 14 is consideration for adoption, the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting on November 18, 2019. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 p.m. on November 18, 2019, here in the, at the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Members present, as well as those in the audience, were, are on file with the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. Item one was approval of the report from the October 7, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Tao, second by Hanson, to approve the report, and that motion carried unanimously. Under maps and plaits received, on item two, on the first item was Kathleen Jolene CSM, there was a motion and a second to approve. The CSM and that motion carried unanimously. Item B is the Steve Tillman Trust Extraterritorial CSM. There was a motion and a second to approve. The CSM and that motion carried unanimously. Item C is the Lucas Eichinger Extraterritorial CSM. There was a motion and a second to approve. The CSM noting that if said property is ever to annex to the city of Wisconsin Rapids, an 80-foot right-of-way is required on 48th Street, and the property owner would at that time need to dedicate seven foot of right-of-way, and that motion carried unanimously. Item D was the Catherine Oshaski CSM. There was a motion and a second to approve. The CSM contingent upon the newly formed outlot being combined with the adjacent property at the time of recording, and that motion carried unanimously. Item D was the Robert Holt CSM. The applicant was requesting a certified survey map for properties. Looked at an Oak Street, there was a motion and a second to table this item until the December meeting, and that motion carried unanimously. Item F was the QuickTrip CSM. The applicant is requesting a CSM approval for the combination of two parcels into one. Over on 25th Avenue North, there was a motion and a second to approve, as presented, and that's motion carried unanimously. At that time, Commission Member Zerflu joined our meeting, and item three was Plan 191042, QuickTrip Incorporated. The applicant was requesting site architectural plan of operation review for a proposed rebuild of a convenience store with an attached car wash, attached dumpster enclosure, auto fueling canopy, and diesel fueling canopy in the B2 General Commercial District. The subject property is located at 2520 West Grand Avenue. There was a motion and a second to approve the plan contingent upon the following: the thorough review of the landscape plan prepared by Insights dated 10/4/2019, and any necessary adjustments to comply with the code. Item two, the driveway list depicted in the proposed site plan be adjusted to comply with the city code. Item three, the awarding of any necessary DNR Army Corps wetland permitting. The fourth, condition the approval of the associated CSM. The fifth, plans adjusted if necessary, consistent with the determination of a special exception that was later on the agenda related to lighting. And item six, consistent with the determination of special exception related to parking, and that motion carried unanimously. Item four, Plan 191044, QuickTrip Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow more lighting when needed to ensure public safety within the B2 General Commercial District. There was a motion and a second to approve, and that motion carried unanimously. Item five was Plan 191070, QuickTrip Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow more parking within their rebuild within the B2 General Commercial District. That, there was a motion and a second to approve, and that motion carried unanimously. Item six was Plan 190938, Community Development. The proposed new sign ordinance, Chapter 46 of the Municipal Code, was previously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, but the common council referred the ordinance back to the Planning Commission for a further discussion. The Community Development Department is requesting adoption of the new sign ordinance. There was a motion and a second to approve with the following modifications to the chapter, yeah, Chapter 46.134B and 3, to strike entirely, accept static displays by permit up to four times per year, up to five days per occurrence. 46.15 parent 4 parent B parent 2 adjusted from seven seconds to five seconds. 46.15B4, there shall be no animated, traveling, scrolling, or flashing transitions. 46.15B7, add except for District B2. 46.17 parent 4, change to, a sign may be placed on an awning and shall not occupy more than 50% of the area of the flap. 46.21.5, inflatable signs or devices shall be allowed in B2 District by permit up to four times per year for any business. Displayed a maximum of five days per permit, not to exceed 20 foot in height, meeting all setback requirements. In the last, 46.23, item B, move this item 46.229 to 46.229C, signs not requiring a permit, and that motion carried unanimously. Item seven was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and the meeting adjourned at 6:29 p.m. With that, Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding the Planning Commission report?
Your Honor, I'd like to hold out item number six, please.
Request to hold out item number six? Did you want to make a motion to approve the balance of the report?
Sure.
Okay. A motion to approve the balance of the report with the exception of item six by Kubashak. Is there a second?
I'd like to pull out the signage.
That is the...
Is that the one?
That's number six, yep. Second by Blazer. Any requests to speak on the balance of the report? Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
That leaves item number six, which I would just point out that there are some discrepancies. Why we waited for the copy of the ordinance tonight was because, I want to be very clear about what was changed from the previous time this item came before the council, and last night's two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour deliberation may be on this topic. Item, and so maybe I can just highlight them for everybody's benefit quickly. Item six, we removed inflatable devices as a prohibited sign, which will be addressed later as a, as an allowed sign. The next struck item, again in red, was item seven, on page seven, sorry, item four, under electronic message displays, which, item four shall read, "There shall be no animated, traveling, scrolling, or flashing transitions." Sorry, I missed one on item two, which is changing from seven to five seconds before the transition or the next message would appear. Item seven, on page seven, would be to make an exception for the General Commercial B2 District to allow those to exist and be operational 24 hours a day. On page eight, under awning signs, number four, to allow, basically, I'll read it, "The sign may be placed on an awning and may not occupy more than 50% of the entire area of the flap." On an awning? Of the awning, yeah. The text of the flap actually should have also been struck. 50% of the area, or total area, on that particular item, of the, sorry, of the awning, thank you. The flaps should be on. you. Flaps of the awning. On page eight, and then page 10, we re-added the inflatable devices or signs, that inflatable devices shall be allowed in the B2 District by permit for a business for up to four times per year, for a maximum of five days per permit. The device may not exceed 20 feet in height and must meet all other sign setback requirements for the district, and these signs will also be added to Table 1. That sort of brings it in compliance or, in accordance with the current sign code that the city has in existence. Item 11, under six, was replacing or moving... It's adding item C, sorry. Yeah, the indents on the drafting didn't move over, so that's adding section C from 46.23, moving it up to remove the requirement for a permit for supplemental signage, keeping the regulations as the same. And then the chart that accompanied that also went around to, to include in the B2 District... Oh, it's actually, needs to be added at the bottom, sorry, on the inflatable device. I think I covered the changes that were discussed at last night's meeting. With that, I'd open up the floor. Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason why I held it out is because I know a lot of work was put into this, and Plan Commission obviously spent two and a half hours last night, but we've got a vacancy in, with the Economic Development Planning and Zoning Director position, whatever we decide, or whoever we decide to bring on, and I don't know, I guess I would like to have them see this. This isn't really a time-sensitive, this isn't an emergency type of a deal. I'd like to have them, because they're going to be the ones that are enforcing this, to maybe, when that person is hired, to go through and give a final sign-off to the, either the Plan Commissioner, the, the, the full council.
Okay. Alder Person Coth, you're next.
Yeah, I just wanted to yield some time to Mr. JR Seaworth, who's here tonight, wanted to speak on this.
JR, if you could come to the podium, please introduce yourself, and then make sure that the microphone has got the green light on the bottom.
Hello, my name is JR Seaworth. I'm the business owner of Coldwell Banker Seaworth Realtors. We have a, a office building right on 8th Street, and clearly would be affected by the proposed new ordinance. I did have the opportunity to be at the Planning Commission meeting last night, had an opportunity to give some input, you know, at that, that meeting. However, I would ask that the council consider postponing acting on this ordinance this evening, because when I visited with about five or six different business owners this morning, after a follow-up to the meeting last night, not one of them even knew that this ordinance was in process, and I feel anything that's going to affect our businesses is something that we should be involving their input on, especially given the amount of vacancies that we have on businesses, you know, in our community. All of those things are going to be factors, and we want to do something that's going to be sensitive to inviting new businesses to come in. There are a lot of good things in this proposed ordinance, and I know a lot of time and effort, and also input from a consultant that was hired, and that being said, I, I still feel there are things in here that are overreaching, and from the conversations that I had with some of those business owners, and I realize this is posted in the lobby of, of City Hall, I realize it's, it's out online on the city website, I realize that it is, you know, on the Facebook page, if you're following the city's Facebook page, but I would also think that the Alder Persons that are responsible for the districts that have a business corridor in it would have reached out to the business owners and invited their input, and if nothing else, invited them to participate in the open house that was held several weeks ago, and also input on what the potential impact was going to be. So, I, for that reason, you know, I would request that the council seriously consider waiting on implementing this new ordinance in its current state. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder, do you have anything else? Alder Person Coth. Alder Person Zerflu, you're next.
I was at the meeting also last night, and as a Planning Commission member, I think Alder Person Kubashak made a very good point. I don't particularly see a need to rush us through. I think it would be prudent to wait. The new Economic Development Director, whenever he or she does start, is going to be the person enforcing this, anyway, so I guess this, I'd like to even make a motion just to table this until such a time as it can be readdressed once we're, we're whole, so to speak.
Postpone.
Postpone, thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, a postponement is to a certain date, unless, a table would be to table it, and then we'd have a motion to pull it off the table unless... That's what I'm, but I'm wondering if it's most appropriate, based upon the spirit of his motion to go to a table scenario where it's lifted off the table. Is there a preference?
A table, right. A table means, like, there's something more important we got to get to, and we're going to get back to this later. If you want to actually postpone it, usually you're supposed to postpone it to a cer, a date certain, generally.
Can I amend the motion, I guess, before a second, then let's just say March 1, 2020? Or council meeting after that?
Okay. A motion to postpone this to March 1, 2020? We have a second. A motion by Zerflu and a second by Kubashak. Alder Person Blazer, you've got the request to speak?
I guess I'll save my speech for later, but if there's anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on the topic, I just want to yield time to them.
Attorney Shill, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay.
Right, and I, I don't know a length of time that'll be, obviously, and March might seem like maybe too far out, but I imagine that person would have to get up to speed, too, so there'd be time, you know, potentially involved.
Well, we can always reconsider, anyway, when you, you know, in the prevailing side, if someone gets hired before, that person can even make a recommendation to the Plan Commission, too, so.
I just want to make sure you weren't expecting anything from staff.
No.
In the meantime, or more information, or inviting certain people, or...
No, I certainly wasn't. I, I don't know that we should address this, anyway, until there is someone in that position at this point.
Thank you. Any further, oh, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, maybe Planning Commission, the March Planning Commission meeting would probably make more sense. Thank you.
You're good with that second? Kubashak, all right. See no further requests to speak? The motions to postpone this item to the March Planning Commission meeting, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 15 is consideration for adoption of the action of the Standing Committees of the Common Council, and the first up is Finance and Property Committee. Chairperson, Alder Person Coth.
Thank you, Honor. I got a couple of them here, I might have to scroll to find them, so just give me a minute, but I'll, I'll go between them. First one is a report of the Property and Finance Committee meeting held on October 22, 2019. The Property and Finance Committee meeting, Property and Finance Committee met at 4:45 PM on Tuesday, October 22, in the first floor conference room of City Hall. All members were present. Also in attendance were Alder Person Reom, Mayor Verwink, and Tim DeSorcy. Item two was discuss, review and discuss the 2020 budget. Mayor Verwink gave an overview of the 2020 budget. The committee discussed the budget and the departmental budgets that will be reviewed in future meetings. The committee scheduled a meeting for October 30, 2019, at 4:45 PM to review the public safety budgets. No action was taking, taken. Item number three was adjournment, motion by Coth, seconded by Blazer to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 6:14 PM. The next meeting was October 30, 2019. Property and Finance Committee, Property and Finance Committee met at 4:45 PM. Alder Person Coth and Blazer were present. Alder Person Catnaugh was excused. List of others attending is on file in the Clerk's Office. Item two was review and discuss the 2020 budget with emphasis on public safety budgets. Police Chief Blevins and Deputy Fire Chief Eckes reviewed their respective 2020 departmental budgets with the committee, based on a review of the Police Department overtime account. Chief Blevins recommending, recommended reducing overtime for special events, I'm sorry, reducing overtime for special events for $20,000 to $7,000. Alder Person Blazer requested that the reduction for special events overtime be reallocated to the special operations overtime, which resulted in the Police Department, no change in their budget, was just money being moved from one event to another. The committee scheduled a meeting for November 12 at 4:45 PM to review the information technology budget in the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Room Tax Budget. No action was taken. Motion by Blazer, seconded by Coth to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:51 PM. Next is the regular Property and Finance Committee meeting held on November 5. The meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM in the first floor conference room. All committee members were present. List of others in attendance is on file at Clerk's Office. Item number two was the 2020 Waterworks and Lighting Commission Budget. Jim Brown and Jeff Kuhn reviewed the 2020 Waterworks and Lighting Commission Budget with the committee. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to approve the 2020 Waterworks and Lighting Budget. Motion carried. Item number three was 2019 Budget Amendment Number Two. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the 2019 Budget Amendment Number Two. Motion carried. See attachment number one. Item number four was consider a request from the Police Department to accept aftermath grant funds if awarded. It was moved by Coth, or, I'm sorry, it was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Coth, to approve the aftermath grant. Motion carried. Item number five was review and consider the acceptance of UW Madison Grant Dollars distributed through Wood County for enhancing bike program safety features. It was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Coth, to accept the UW Madison Grant Funds for enhancing bike program safety features. Motion carried. Item number six was consider restricting mobile food vending trucks from selling residential areas. This item was held over until the next regularly scheduled Finance and Property meeting, when a draft ordinance will be presented for consideration to the committee. Item number seven was consider a class, consider a temporary Class B Beer License for the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center Incorporated, located at 320 West Grand Avenue, Suite 104, for a Christmas Day, for a Christmas holiday art opening to be held November 14, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the temporary Class B Beer License for the Central Wisconsin Cultural Center located at 320 West Grand Avenue, Suite 104, for a Christmas holiday art opening to be held November 14, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Motion carried. Item number eight was consider a request from Central Rapids LLC, doing business as La Taqueria, Luis Melendez Agent, located at 1345 A Street South, for a Class B, in Class B Beer and Class B Liquor License. I'd just like to, I think it's supposed to be Class B Beer in there, but that is missing. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the Class B Beer and Class B Liquor License for Central Wisconsin LLC, doing business as La Taqueria, Luis Melendez Agent, located at 1345 A Street South. Motion carried. Item number nine was consider a request from Joseph Elmorey for Jack-in-the-Box Resale Pawn LLC, doing as business as Jack-in-the-Box Resale Pawn, located at 1551 Russ, West Grand Avenue, for a pawnbroker's license. This item was held over until the next regularly scheduled Property and Finance Committee meeting. Item number 10 was an audit of the bills. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve check number 1027 to 1499. Motion carried. Item number 11 was beverage operator licenses. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to approve the beverage operator licenses. Item number 12 was to set the next meeting date. The next Property and Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for December 10, 2019, at 4:45 PM. Item number 13 was discussion budget review with the Public Works Director regarding the Public Works Budget. Joe Terry, Paul Volart, and Joe Ixtet reviewed the respective Public Works budgets with the committee. No action was taken. Item number 14, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under 19.85 Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin Statutes, which reads, "Delivering, negotiating, or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, or investing public funds, or considering other specified business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will discuss negotiation regarding amendments to the city's development agreement with Community Property Incorporated, discuss negotiations regarding an agreement involving the sale of land, acceptance of easements, street dedication, and other actions to determine clear title to parcels of land near the intersection of Mead Street and 2nd Street South. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to go into closed session. Motion carried by roll call vote. The committee may adjourn in closed session or return to open session. In open session, if the committee returns to open session, the committee may take action regarding the development agreement with Community Property Incorporated. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to approve the termination of the development agreement. Motion carried. See attachment number two. Item number 17, adjournment. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh, to adjourn, and the meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM. And I just got to move ahead to November 12 here. And the last meeting is the Property and Finance Committee meeting on November 12, 2019. The committee met at 4:45 PM. Alder Person Blazer chaired that meeting. Alder Person Kellogg stood in for me. The meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM. Item number two was discuss the 2020 budget with emphasis on IT Department, wastewater utility, parking recreation, and the Wisconsin Rapids Area Visitor and Business Bureau. Meredith Keckler gave the committee a presentation on activities of the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention Visitors Bureau. Joe Terry, Ryan Giefer, Tyler Mickelson, and Andy Raddick reviewed their respective department budgets with the committee. Tim DeSorcy presented and reviewed a resolution that would increase the Stormwater Management Utility Fund equivalent residential unit from 3504 to 3708. The estimated increase in revenue of $50,000 would reduce the amount proposed in the 2020 bond issue. The resolution will be considered by the council at the November 19, 2019 meeting. No action was taken. Item number three was adjournment. It was a motion by Kellogg, seconded by Blazer, to adjourn, and the meeting adjourned at 6:12 PM. I'll, before I make a motion to approve, I'll just see if anyone wants anything held out from any of those meetings. out from any of those meetings. If no one wants anything held out, then I will make a motion to approve the Property and Finance Committee meeting reports.
Got a motion by Coth and a second by Blazer. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. The motions to approve those reports, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 15E is the Public Works Committee meeting held on November 5th and 19th. Alder Person Kubashak, the floor is yours.
Public Works Committee, meet, one more time. The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Thaddeus Kubashak, Vernon Verginsky, and Tom Rayom were present. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number one was called to order. Meeting was called to order at 6:35 PM. Item number two, review and consider an initiative from the Monarch Encouragement and Bird City for Milkweed Plants on the city-owned Boulevard at the south side of the expressway between Lincoln Street and First Street South. Penny Van Tassel presented a request to promote the planting of pollinator plants in areas throughout the city and specifically along the expressway between Lincoln Street and First Street South. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Rayom was to place a request on the referral list. Motion carried three to zero. Item number three, review and consider the changes made to the East Grand Reconstruction Project, specifically the proposed Boulevard areas that were originally planned as concrete, but now changed to sod. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Kubashak was to place this item on the referral list. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, review and consider approval of preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments to pave an asphalt surface on the alley immediately west of Second Avenue South between Park Avenue and Lyons Street, should be Lyon Street. There is not an S on that. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Verginsky was to approve a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments to pave an asphalt surface on the alley immediately west of Second Avenue South between Park Avenue and Lyons Street. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, review and discuss requests from Wood County to modify the existing parking along the east side of Market Street between Avon Street and Baker Street to add an ADA stall and restrict the remaining parking stalls to delivery vehicles only. A motion by Rayom, seconded by Verginsky was to modify the existing street parking along the east side of the market, east side of Market Street between Avon Street and Baker Street to accommodate four passenger cars, two ADA compliant stalls, and one delivery vehicle. Motion carried three to zero. Item number six, review and consider approval of a service agreement with MSA to perform the conceptual study of One Mile Creek Ponds. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Kubashak was to approve a service agreement with MSA to perform a conceptual study on One Mile Creek Ponds. Motion carried two to one with Verginsky voting in the negative. Item number seven, review and consider approving storm sewer options for 21st Place. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Kubashak was to direct staff to contact water, the water utility in the school district to blow off water, utility water on district property away from the subdivision. Motion carried three to zero. Item number eight, review and update the correspondence with WISDOT for the turn lanes at the intersection of A Street and Chestnut Street. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Rayom was carried to alter the Chestnut Street lane markings at A Street South as presented by the engineer. Motion carried three to zero. Review and update, item number nine was review and update approving changes to the lawn mowing practices and procedure on the city-owned Boulevard at the south side of the expressway and all their slope green spaces. Motion by Kubashak, seconded by Verginsky was to refer a request to the Finance Committee to increase the Public Works Department staff by two full-time employees. Motion carried three to zero. Item number 10 was Director of Public Works Report. The report was reviewed. It's also online. Number 11, review referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Item number 12, adjournment. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Verginsky was carried to adjourn at 9:52 PM. Should I, do you want me to go to the next one too? Hold on. Goodbye. Then the next committee meeting, the Public Works Committee met Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Thaddeus Kubashak and Vernon Verginsky were present. Tom Rayom was absent. Others attending are on file at clerk's office. Number, item number one was called to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. Item number two, review concept plan for the West Jackson Street Project, DOT Project ID 6999-11-08/78 between West Riverview Expressway and the Jackson Street Bridge. The concept was reviewed. Item number three, review and consider approval of design services for the design of West Jackson Street, DOT Project ID 6999-11-08/78 between West Riverview Expressway and Jackson Street Bridge. Motion by Verginsky, seconded by Kubashak to approve allowing the Engineering Department to negotiate with the four submitted proposals and bring back the next, bring back to the next committee meeting for review. Motion carried two to zero. Item number four, motion by Kubashak, seconded by Verginsky to adjourn at 6:02 PM. Motion carried two to zero. And unless I don't hear any holdouts on either of these two reports, I'll make the motion to approve these.
Alder Person Zerfloo, did you have a?
Well, I would just request number nine from the first report be withheld just for discussion.
Is there any opposition? Nope, hearing no opposition. Alder Person Zerfloo, oh, actually, we'll just take care of the report and then move on to that item. We've got a motion by Kubashak. Is there a, seconded by Verginsky, I think Verginsky, if we could just have their remote drawn. There we go. Thank you. With the, two reports with the exception of item number nine. See no requests to speak. The motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
We'll move back to 15E, number nine. Alder Person Zerfloo, did you want to speak to that item?
I guess, mostly just for clarification. I do have a resident present here. I don't know if she'll want to speak to this or not. But we were just talking and the, the referral that was sent to Property Finance was for staff and potentially equipment. I guess my question was, when it comes to the south side of the expressway, is that the decision to, whether or not to mow that, is that really even, I mean, isn't that kind of at the discretion of the Public Works Director? Does anyone know that or?
I defer to our city attorney for clarification if you wish to provide that. I mean, I think operationally, I mean, there was a referral to discuss it. I think from an operations standpoint, the council approves the finances to accomplish the operations that the staff deem necessary. Attorney Schill, do you have anything to say on that?
So the question is regard, whether the council would be involved in the policy on what areas to mow lawn in the city? Well, I would say that, to the extent that, I guess I would argue that it probably is something more within the purview of Public Works Director than the manner of how you do something. I realize this is kind of a hot subject, and I guess I'd be interested to hear what Mr. Terry has to say. I mean, I, it's definitely something that can be discussed at council. I don't think that, I think the council could have general policies regarding the equipment they purchase, or that equipment that's purchased and would eventually affect, you know, the ability of the crew to mow this area. So, you know, I guess in a way you have a say in it. I guess I think the better answer would be to just, you know, talk about it and determine what's the best course going forward and, and what makes the most sense. And I don't know if that discussion has actually happened or not. I think the, the referral for the two, for the two employees, I mean, it wasn't necessarily out of order because you can always make referrals, but it, that obviously wasn't something that was on the agenda to talk about how many, you know, staffing levels. And that is something that really would go to HR. There's a certain policy on how new employees are handled. So that definitely is something that I believe should go to HR and not necessarily to finance right away. But I guess I'd ask Mr. Terry how he, what he thinks about that.
Yeah, I would occur with, concur with Attorney Schill's assessment. In general, our public works activities are performed, you know, based on budget and policies. So if the city would establish policies relating to certain expectations, if, if the direction that I've given staff doesn't satisfy the council's objectives, policies can certainly be put in place and have been, you know, for various aspects of, of operation and maintenance. We do have some operating policies for some of our operations. Many of those have been generated internally. But certainly, any, any policy that the council wishes to establish on the maintenance of our, our city facilities would be appropriate.
Well, and I, I think I'll get back in the order here and just let the other council members, I guess, say what they want to say since there's a little queue here. But then I do intend to recognize Ms. Whalen if she chooses to say something.
Thank you. Alder Person Coth, you're next.
Yeah, I just want to, as far as the referral, like, speak to the referral that come to Property and Finance on this. Attorney Schill pretty much already covered it, but if we're going to add personnel that needs to go to the HR committee is what I was told. And I think Alder Person Kubashak got the email on that too. But the issue at hand, the trimming of the Riverview Expressway hill, I think, I don't think it's a personnel issue because in my time on the council, I know this has been discussed before when, when it quit happening. And the way it was explained, and Joe can probably weigh in on this, because subsequently in my district, there was a person that lives close to Gainer Park, that, that hill back there, kind of the area that's referred to as Bloody Osage where the kids go sledding in the wintertime. That hill quit, was subsequently not mowed either, and there was a resident that had a problem with it, and I followed up with Joe on it. And it's not manpower or staffing that was the issue for these hills to quit being mowed. It was a safety issue. On our city-owned tractors that are used for mowing these, there is a, then I'll let Joe speak on this here because he can probably articulate it better than I can, but basically there's a tilt limit safety switch that if you're cutting on a hill, that this tilt safety limit switch will engage and it will prevent you from cutting on the hill, which brought up the question like, well, they've always, they've always cut these hills, why did it stop now? This, the by, basically in short, the, the safety switch was bypassed. It was being bypassed. And just because we've always done something in past practice, and it's unsafe, doesn't mean that we should just continue to bypass a safety measure to cut the hills for the sake of cutting hills. If these areas need to be landscaped or controlled somehow, then we should look at it, but manpower, I don't think is the issue. I think it's the, doing it safely, and I certainly wouldn't want to be responsible for telling a city employee to bypass a safety feature to cut the grass. Joe, anything to say on that?
As, as it relates to the hillside that you had described, that, that's accurate. That particular hillside, it typically would be mowed a couple times a year only. One of the reasons, because there are springs, the wet conditions didn't allow any of it. The other areas were a part of an evaluation on staff and time and, and safety. And without going into a lot of detail, the, over, over the years, the Parks Department has been reorganized, and I was not satisfied with the quality of the mowing that we were doing throughout the city. We were leaving things clumpy. We weren't able to get through the city in a reasonable amount of time to keep the grass short enough that we weren't resulting in clumps and windrows. So we evaluated and tried to make the entire process more efficient. And during that evaluation, we discovered that there are certain areas we're going to have to eliminate from the cycle so that we can get everything done that we do mow well. And our first choice was areas that were unsafe for our tractors. That was an easy decision because I wasn't about to allow our staff to continue to perform in an unsafe way. And, and so one of those areas was along the Riverview Expressway, and, and it's been a contentious decision, and it's been discussed, I think, for three or four months at the public works level. You know, so we still, we're still looking at potential remedies to address it, deal with it, so on and so forth.
Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
I'll disagree a bit. Mr. Verginsky read the ordinance to us. It is exceeding the height of the ordinance, and I believe that it needs to be mowed. However, I'm not in favor of blanket mowing. You know, we choose the most highly visible spot through the city, one of them, and choose not to mow it. I'd be in favor of doing something landscaping-wise there. I would be in favor of something other than the neglect appearance. But as for what the, the groups are doing for Monarchs, I'm in favor of that. But I think we, until we drive by there and realize that it's not a neglected area, whether it be better signage, explaining what we're doing, but just leaving it neglected, I have a problem with that. Thank you. Oh, and also, sorry, if we truly wanted to mow that, month after month, departments come to the pub Finance and Finance Committee meeting and request equipment. So truly, if we really wanted to mow that spot, somebody would have brought forth a safe alternative because they do make mowers to mow that, and they would have come and asked for that mower to be purchased to address those hill areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Kellogg, you're next.
My comments are similar to Mr. Blazer. Basically, I'm really concerned about adding more personnel. Once you add more personnel, you're never going to get rid of that personnel. I mean, all departments want more. And coming with the personnel has fringe benefits and everything else, but getting lawn mowers and equipment that are efficient and effective, there's no fringe benefits on those, and they're effective. But if you give to the public works with regard to cutting lawns, I think there's a concern also with regard to large refuse pickup, and I brought that up. What about sofas that are left out on the streets or other things that are left out? Mattresses when you go around the city? So I don't, if we are going to have personnel, let's look at the big picture. If it's large refuse, if it's, if it's lawns or whatever, but let's be specific. When this came up, it was just a general discussion, and there was some concern that we don't have enough time and, and laying it out. I like to know the specifics about what areas are cut, how much time it takes to cut, what equipment we have, what equipment we need, and what about refuges? So I'm not going to vote for it unless we have that stipulation specific. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Person Zerfloo, you're back up.
I would just like to recognize Elizabeth Whalen if she'd like to speak to the item
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Whalen, and I live at 211 15th Avenue North. I'm here in Rapids. Thanks for taking the time to discuss this. I mean, we all, well, obviously, we're here because we care about our city and we love our city, and we want it to look the best that we can. And I know that that specific area along the expressway probably bothers a number of people, and I would like to have seen that perhaps we put off decisions on, on, on it and tell, we can, as you suggested, make a better plan for it. One of the things that I wanted to bring, over at Lake Nepco, there was a citizens initiative where the county had cleared the grass there, and they had done some work, and they had basically made it bare earth, and they planted it with prairie plants. And they ended up with just, you know, And they ended up with just, you know, a beautiful floral, and that actually benefited, you know, the pollinators, and it was a bird habitat. And I got this off of Google Maps, so visitors to our area were taking pictures of that. And I want that for our city. I want people to, you know, find areas that, you know, there's things that are beautiful that they can take pictures of and say, hey, look, we were here, and, you know, wouldn't it be nice, you know, if you came to? Places that are planted with native plants don't need that, you know, personnel to maintain them. After a while, they maintain themselves over years. They have superior erosion control. They filter storm water. They recharge groundwater. There's just less long-term maintenance, greater resistance to weeds. It provides a wildlife habitat. But it's also the sort of thing that we can be proud of and makes a difference. I know one of the things I was looking at was Muskego has, you know, made commitments to those areas, the Twin Cities, and it's something that draws people in. So if I would, you know, make a motion, if I could, I would say, you know, table this sort of discussion until we get more information. There are several different businesses that our Monarch Encouragement, Bird City, and Clean Green actually said, hey, do you do, you know, landscaping with native, you know, things? And they were like, oh, yeah. Nature Works up in Mozenee is one of those that, you know, was like, hey, you know, we'd be happy to take a look at that sort of thing. So we all want, you know, our city to be as beautiful as possible, whether it's, you know, garbage not being around, recycling, planting, and thanks for, you know, considering that.
Thank you. Alder Person Zerflu, did you have anything further?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
Sorry, I forgot to include that. We did have a discussion with Mr. Terry at the Finance Meeting about the personnel, and, you know, obviously, down the road, there's restructuring, and they're looking at their department, and I think at that time, those items will be taken up. But we did discuss it briefly.
Thank you, Alder Person Kubushak, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kellogg, I apologize because my referral was not very thorough in there. And what I was looking at is adding two Public Works employees for everything, you know, whether it's picking up garbage or whether. So it wasn't specifically for lawn mowing, but I think that's where we're at in terms of this discussion, is not necessarily should we, shouldn't we entertain outside organizations to do something with it? But the question is, are we going to mow it or are we not? And as far as safety goes, absolutely, I would never compel an employee or a person of this organization, or any organization for that matter, to do something unsafe. And in fact, I would, I might be called on a carpet to that because I've got specialized safety training that I can administer in the construction industry, so I'm very well aware. Although with that specialized training, I know that despite the fact that we can't compel our own employees to do that, we could hire a sole practitioner that would have their own machine, and that person could potentially mow whatever areas. And in fact, if that person is actually by themselves, their own employee, they don't have to comply with any safety standards, federal or state. So there are options that we can have to mow that, but I think that that's one of the things that we need to do first, is decide what we're going to do moving forward. So that's where this whole discussion came from.
Alder Person Virginsky, you're next.
At the meeting when this item was discussed, one of the things that I brought up is that we're violating our own ordinance. There's an ordinance out there that says that the city has to maintain areas where there are noxious weeds if the property owner don't take care of them, and they can build the property owner. This is on city property, so we're violating our own ordinance. There's a policy that's signed by the neighbor as well. Now, I can't identify all weeds, but I'm sure there's noxious weeds on that, on that piece of property that we're talking about now. So that's the first step we have to take if we're going to do something other than just mow it. We have to have the ordinance changed.
Thank you. Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
I'll make a motion now. We approve the item as presented, being that there's really no action, so.
The motion by Blazer to approve item number nine, and a second by Coth. Any further requests to speak? Alder Person Zerflu?
Just as a point of order, would it have to be changed to go to HR, though, or is it Finance Property? Because I've heard it kind of both ways.
To me, I hate to say it's dead, but.
Right. It's been.
Kind of disposed.
The referral was considered, yeah, disposed at the Finance Property Committee Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six I's, zero N's.
Thank you. Item 15G, the Human Resources Committee meeting held on November 11. Alder Person Blazer, the floor is yours.
All right. Human Resources Committee met at 4:15 on Monday, November 11 in the first-floor conference room. Alder Person Zerflu, Kellogg, and myself were present, along with City Attorney Schill and Mayor Verwink. The meeting was actually called to order at 4:20. First item that took up, a motion by Zerflu, second by Kellogg, to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, which read, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Real call vote was taken with all members voting in the affirmative. Motion carried. In closed session, the committee considered proposals for interim human resource consultant services. Item B, in closed session, the committee received an update and discussed strategy regarding labor negotiations with IAFF and WRPPA, and discussed tentative agreements with WRPPA. Item three, motion by Kellogg, second by Zerflu, to go back in open session. That motion carried unanimously. It was moved by Blazer, second by Zerflu, to hire Poggle HR Consulting for interim HR, human resource consultant services at a rate of $100 per hour plus expenses for a period not to exceed 120 days. It is anticipated that service, or those services, will average 10 hours per week. Motion carried unanimously. Everybody was emailed information from the mayor today on a resume and, I think it was contract, or proposal for services. Item five, motion by Zerflu, second by Kellogg, to approve the tentative labor agreements with WRPPA as presented. Motion carried unanimously. See attached agreement. Item six is motion by Zerflu, second by Kellogg, to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at 5:05 PM. Anybody want to hold anything out? With that, I make for a motion to adopt.
We have a motion to approve by Blazer and a second by Zerflu. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, the motion's to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six I's, zero N's.
Thank you. Item number 16 is the reports of the other committees, commissions, and boards, departmental reports. Item A, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority, held on September 25. Item B, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Summary for October. Item C, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held October 2 and November 6. Item D, the Southwood County Airport Commission, meeting held October 3. Item E, the Police and Fire Commission, held October 9 and November 13. Item F, the Water Works and Lighting Commission, held October 9 and October 21. Item G, the Park and Recreation Commission, held on October 14. And item H, the McMillan Memorial Library, held on October 16. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the ballots of the reports.
We have a motion by Coth and a second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion's to approve.
Motion carried, six I's, zero N's.
Item 17, a reading of written referrals of communication to committees. Madam Clerk, you've not received any referrals. Alder Person Virginsky?
I've had some calls regarding the flashing yellow light that exists on Lincoln and the expressway. I talked to the Engineering Department. That seems to be the only one that we have in the city. And people don't know exactly what to do when they get to that intersection. I would like to see someone contact the newspaper and maybe get an article in there as to why the flashing light, what it's supposed to accomplish, who paid for it. And I understand that QuickTrip had a hand in that, but it may answer a lot of questions for the public.
Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Zerflu, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Coth. All in favor? Any opposed? The I's have it. We stand adjourned at 7:34 PM. Have a great evening and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving.